Seen here. I'm grateful for everybody else that does it. Fabulous. Thank you. Yes. We can't have it.
May I ask why?
Well, Paul, neither one of us has an immune response to them. Paul doesn't have a functioning immune system and I take an immunosuppressant, so I don't have an immune response. So, yeah, so it's wasted, you know?
So we really got to protect you then.
That's why we're very careful and don't go any.
Okay, this is getting so old. Okay, Michelle, are we live yet?
You are.
Okay, it is six thirty. I'd like to call this regular council meeting to order on January nineteenth at six thirty. Matt, can you do the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
Yes.
And after we do that, a moment of silence for Marsha Hall, and I've also added Heidi Crick-Bung. Marty, will I lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jenny, would you do roll call, please?
Matt?
Here.
Marty?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Scott? Oh, he's not here. Tammy?
Here.
Let me see if he's trying to call me. I have my phone on mute. Okay, I know he's going to be here, so maybe he's just running late. Motion to accept the December fifteenth council meeting minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Motion to approve the special hearing on January whoops, public hearing meetings for December fifteenth at six thirty also. Sorry.
Don't move.
Ben?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Motion to approve the special council meeting from January fifth.
So moved.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, as everybody has seen, it's sad to say that we received a letter from Paula that she's submitting her resignation from council effective as of yesterday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Says I've been struggling for a long time with this decision. I'm finally taking the step to allow me to concentrate on those areas in my life that are important to me, namely her family, friends, and herself. I let her, I emailed her back. I saw several of you did to thank her for her service to the village and the community. If council has no objections, then I will have Jenny put an ad in the paper to advertise and put it on our webpage. Do I need a motion for that, Michelle?
No, you don't. We just need to get some applications in.
Okay.
No objections here.
Okay.
I'm here either.
Me either.
What's the deadline?
I'd say next council meeting is the sixteenth of February, right?
Yeah.
Let's say maybe the so finance would be the tenth. Let's say the tenth. Is that plenty of time, everybody thinks?
Yes.
Yep.
Five.
And I do have a text from Randy. Let me see what it says. He says he's having trouble getting on. He's coming, so. Also, while we're waiting, I did receive a letter of interest to be on the cemetery board, the parks board, and the shade tree board. I just got it this afternoon, so I can send it out to everybody tomorrow so they can read it. Says Mayor Clark, I'm writing to express my interest in serving our community and participating in Manaway Village Government. I own a home in the village and have been a resident for the past two years. In particular, I am eyeballing vacant seats on the cemetery committee, the shade tree committee, and the parks board. I should disclose that my father and neighbor, Scott Weaver, presently serves on the parks board and is a standing council member. I hope that that relationship will not cause me to exclude her from assuming a role in those positions. And it's from Nina Schroeder. Any discussion on that? Anybody have a problem with it being Randy's daughter? Could I have a motion to approve those appointments for those three committees?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Michelle, can you resend? Scott the link?
Uh huh, uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll go on with my mayor's report. Math Road Bridge, we were discussing this at planning the other night. I did some research. The Ohio Bridge Partnership Program, that was the second one that we had applied for. We did not receive a reward, an award for that. It was decided if we did not get it at planning that we should wait until we have a village administrator to proceed with looking for funding for that. Booker Park Phase Two. The paving came in under budget and the service department has purchased half the lumber to redo the concrete benches. Jenny had spoken, I'm sorry, John had spoke to Jenny back in October about the fact that we still had about twenty-five thousand dollars left from the grant to spend up or to spend or the match amount would go up. Mary Ann and Dave are in the process of getting costs together to see what a swing set, fiber, five-bar mulch, four backboards for the basketball courts, new brackets and nets. So we can use that for the rest of the funding and try and keep ourselves under budget. The five-bar mulch, we need to replace either all the gravel or the mulch underneath all the playground equipment. Risk management was in to see us about a week ago. We just got a letter and there's several items. Playground equipment needs painted, and this is not going to be part of the grant. It's just stuff we need to do. There's a couple of rubber brackets that you step on to get on one of the pieces, the equipment that is broken. That needs replaced. So painting, they said we need to put the five-bar mulch or some kind of mulch underneath all the equipment. It has to be so many inches deep and that kind of thing to make us compliant with risk management that sends a report to our insurance company. So we'll be proceeding with that. Jenny finally has gotten money back from ODNR for the Phase Two Booker Park. Jenny, was it fourteen or nineteen thousand dollars?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. Fourteen and change. I knew it was that. So we'll be proceeding with that as soon as we get some estimates and check with them to make sure how we submit all that stuff. Oh, we are also, sorry. The cameras that have been down at the park are not working. We had called it was either Mr. Hammond's or I can't remember which of the guys it was. I think it was Mr. Hammond's. Sent him an email to see if we could use some of that funding also for getting those cameras up and working. Those cameras don't work, but we have the two cameras that are down at the water plant. And we have some good cameras still left from when the chief replaced those here. So we just have to get the DVR up and running and Manaline, and they say that we can do that again, and we have to find a server, either a used one or purchase a new server to monitor the activities at the park. So, so like I said, we're going to keep it all under that twenty-five thousand dollar mark and do what we can. And ODNR has approved these changes, so. I'm sorry, as soon as we have prices, we'll let everybody know what's going on. Booker Park Phase Three, I did speak with Mr. Hammond's on that. We were supposed to hear about the award for that back in October. With the COVID, everything has been pushed back. The last email that I had received from him in December said we'd hear in January. Now they're saying, hopefully, we will know in February. And just to remind everybody, that was Phase Three was to do on the north side of the road, paved walkways and such over there. The total project estimate was a hundred and ten thousand dollars to remind everybody. DMRC was committed to twenty-two thousand dollars, excuse me, in matching money, and the grant amount was eighty-eight thousand dollars. Again, I want to remind everybody that this is a reimbursable grant, which means that when we certify the funds, we should be certifying a hundred percent that we have that money to pay that if something happens. So if and when we're awarded, we'll need to be discussing this to see if we're all comfortable with certifying that amount of money that's going to be encumbered from our general fund. So, because we know we don't have it in parks, so. Just to let everybody know that we need to do that. And also, I received from ODNR, they have a new grant out, paddling enhancement grant. This is a hundred percent reimbursable grant, up to seventy-five thousand dollars. It would be to like if we wanted to put more gravel and stuff down on the turnaround at the park for kiosks, for kiosks, for ramps, drives, lighting, and parking. The things that are not covered are picnic tables, trash cans, land purchase, and a few other things. I'm bringing this up because it's due on March first, and I did receive an email from DMRC that they were interested in us checking into that. So if you guys would like to make a motion, if you want us to proceed with this, or because we have Phase Two that we're waiting to hear about, not to be spending any more money at this time at the park. So open that for discussion.
What's worst case if we go for it and then we don't use it?
I'm sorry, worst case?
Worst case, I mean, we apply it and we don't get it, right?
That's one case, or we get it and we can turn it back.
So why not, right? So why not?
The most important thing is, is the money in the general fund and stuff to certify for the clerk treasurer to certify that kind of money. Are we going to have that? That's what we need to know mostly.
Right, that's one of my big concerns.
What about if we're awarded the grant and then we turn it out? Is there a penalty? Is there like a restocking fee, if you will?
There's not a restocking fee per se, but what happens is when you turn grants back after you've been approved for them, you would still have probably some expenses of writing the grant. And I know like with OPW C, if you turn a grant back, it kind of moves you down the next time you apply.
It puts you at the bottom of the list and then.
Bottom of the list, but it doesn't help that you.
Up to seventy-five thousand?
I'm sorry?
Is that grant up to seventy-five thousand? Can we just apply for a part of it?
Sure. Jean Rich, we don't have to go for the seventy-five. I know that we do need a new driveway down there. We had it donated by Bruggmans when we first put it in.
Yeah, well, it'd be nice to get the new driveway and gravel around the turnaround.
Right.
And you said that was a hundred percent reimbursable, correct?
That's what, that's how it was written, a hundred percent reimbursable. Jean, are you familiar with that grant?
I apologize, I had not.
I will send you what they sent me.
Okay, thank you.
What's it called, Linda?
Paddling Enhancement Grant from ODNR. And it says a hundred percent reimbursable grant. It didn't say that there was a match.
If you send that to me, I can ask Jennifer, you know, tomorrow to look into, you know, Jennifer Brown in our office to see what she knows about that. And then also to see if there's a shoot, I can't think of the word, the if you have to have the money certified to have a hundred percent of that.
Okay, any other discussion on that?
Nope, not for me.
So would you want to not do anything with this? I guess I'm going to ask, or do you want me to come up with some figures on what it would cost for, after verifying if there's no match? DMRC has not, did not indicate that they were interested in paying a match on that. And like I said, that's how it was worded, a hundred percent reimbursement.
Yeah, let them check out and see what's going on more so with it. Because right now.
We need to watch our pennies.
We need to know more about it.
Yeah, I'd be okay with checking out a smaller amount because we've just got, we've got a couple of the projects going on and we're anticipating being spread pretty thin in the coming year or two anyways.
I know that it was sent to me, to Matt, and to Tammy, that he had sent it to the three of us. It was one day last week. I will, I will send it to everybody in the morning. We will do some checking on it to see, I mean, see how intense the application is itself. I mean, if it's not due till March first, again, we're putting ourselves under the gun by waiting till the sixteenth to pass legislation, but we could discuss it at service with more in-depth information and see if we want to move something on to council.
A good idea.
That sounds like a plan.
Everybody agreeable to that? I don't think we need a motion to do that. We'll just do some research now.
You don't need a motion.
Right. Okay. I do have a special event form from Crestwood Ponytail League. They want to use the south side softball field from April first to July fifteenth. Anybody have an issue with that, as long as they have their insurance and the COVID is ramped back by them? I mean, everything's contingent on the COVID.
Yeah, no problem.
Is that a motion, Marty?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, and Lori Raider, some of you, Ben and Marty would probably remember her, from First Energy. That's who we got the electric aggregate for the residents for back in, I think it was two thousand nine, two thousand ten. That we get a discount on our electric bill if you you have to opt out or you get put in, I think. I think it was an opt-out. Our contract with them is coming due in May of this year, and so they have contacted me and they want to have a Zoom meeting to go over some pricing and stuff. So going to let you guys know that we will be meeting with her to see if it would be our benefit to enlist this for our residents to save them. I think last time we saved point zero four cents per cubic kilo, I'm sorry, kilowatt, per cubic kilowatt, but we'll see what they're offering now. So, just to let you know, so I'll probably be bringing that up at service also. Next thing I wanted to ask council about, I received an email that Dave Ackery had written, and it has to do with the cemetery. It says Jenny and John discussed changing time sheets as far as which employees' wages were allocated out of which accounts, and that Jenny and John allegedly said that they were going to take Vern's and Dave's wages out of streets and Liz's and Paul's split between tree care and parks. Anything for cemetery would not be taking any wages out of cemetery. So it was regardless of what tasks they were performed, they were only going to be taking wages out of streets, tree care, tree care and parks. A lot of our residents, well, all of our residents and non-residents, they pay for their lots. They pay when there's interment. They pay when the footers get done. So I don't understand why we are not paying our employees when they are up at the cemetery for two or three or four hours digging a grave. That money should come from cemetery. And how are we tracking cemetery time for spring cleanup if we're not taking any wages out of there? So I'd like to know how we determine or how Jenny and John have determined that we wouldn't be taking any money out of the cemetery fund. So I would ask Jenny how they came to that decision.
Well, the cemetery fund barely supports itself as it is. And that's how council did pass the appropriations. We had it in the working papers that one part-time person was parks, one was tree care. I mean, it's not unusual for different communities to pay their people that way, even though they work all over the place. They, it's just easier budgeting. I'm sure that their supervisor knows what they're doing and where they're working. But the money that, that people are paying us for burials and things like that are still, it still goes into the cemetery operating fund. But like, you know, we, we don't split out the gas bill by, you know, because they drove two miles to the park and a mile to the, we don't split the gas bill out. We don't split out their uniform allowance. We don't split out their healthcare that way. So it just seemed to be an easier way to keep records. So if council doesn't want to change it, we don't have to. But right now, that is how we set the appropriations.
Well, when I pulled up the appropriations that we passed in December, there were wages in cemetery and insurance listed in the final budget that I received. So my question is, is, is I don't feel that, I feel it should have come to council for them to make that decision, not the village administrator and, and the clerk on where we take the wages from. In my opinion, if we're going to limit on where we're going to pay their wages from, why don't we just have one big general fund and just pay everything out of that instead of breaking it even down the streets? And my next question would be is how, how can we justify what we send to the cemetery trust for the spring cleanup? That we know if it's accurate. So those are questions for council. Opinions, council? Thoughts?
So just to make sure I understand this correctly, the service department employees are paid out of the different funds, right? So like, for example, Dave's paid out of parks, whatever, right? And so every time that one of our service employees goes down to the, historically, every time one of our service employees goes down to the cemetery to do some work, what, what they would normally do is log how much time that they spent there doing whatever it is that they did. And then we would allocate the money to pay for their check from the cemetery fund to account for the time that was spent there.
Well, it is, it is kind of split out that way, but it's not ever exact. Like it, it might only take them ten minutes to run up to the cemetery and grab the trash. You know, so, so they're probably not even going to charge that day. But just in the overall, at the end of the pay period, then they'll just throw a couple hours on cemetery if they know they had been up there, but. I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if they're doing some major work for a couple hours, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think it's important that, that, you know, it's tracked and acknowledged where, you know, they're spending their time, or at least in regards to the cemetery, especially in regards to cemetery, but if, you know, I think that it should be billed to the cemetery fund. That's just me.
I agree.
And I would even.
If they're going to, if they're going to take it out of parks and shade tree, they ought to be taking it out of cemetery too, so. Not enough funds. We're going to have to figure a way to get more funds there to cover it.
Yeah, and I'd even take it one farther and say that anything relating to finances, revenues coming in, going out, funds being changed, that needs to go through council, really. And if there's a loophole in the, in the, in the rules and the ordinances that allow it to not go through council, we need to close that loophole. That's what I think.
Barry?
Yeah, I think it needs to go by through finance and then to council.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. It should go through finance.
Yeah, they can bring it to, to council, but yeah.
Okay, that is it for my mayor's report.
Mayor, before we continue, do we want to have a moment of silence?
We did a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance before I moved on.
Okay.
It was less than a minute, but a moment of silence.
Okay, alright.
Okay, thank you. Citizens out there, Michelle?
I just have one email from Jen Sobzak, and she asks, how is the village doing overall during the COVID pandemic?
Well, thank you, Jen, for your we're doing adequately. We're all struggling to get through day after day.
I think the village is growing through this. Look at how many businesses we brought in this year.
Yeah. And we have another new one that's going down in D's Clip Joint down by Mama Lights, a new beauty shop, so that's opening up. Okay, no other citizens at this time?
I have no other comments, no.
Okay. Any financial reports, please?
Okay, I think overall, we did very well this year considering what we went through in 2020. The positive thing is that we are in our first step of going digital. And now I will give you the tax updates comparing 2019 to 2020. For the general fund, the taxes collected for property tax in 2020 were fifteen hundred more than 2019. Local government funds, we collected about two thousand more in 2020 than we did in 2019. Municipal income taxes were about sixteen thousand less than we did in 2019, and we also paid about twenty thousand dollars to Rita for tax collection. So we were actually down about thirty-six thousand for income tax. Then in street, state highway, and permissive, in 2020, we collected about eighteen thousand four hundred more than in 2019. But we were actually budgeting for thirty-one thousand more because of that boost in the gas tax. So we didn't quite meet that. We collected about We collected about 46,000 less in license tax in the last year. I do think we're going to eventually get that, that should catch up. And we collected 700 less in permissive taxes. So that, that's the summary of the taxes. The books are now closed for 2020 and our biannual audit is about to get underway. I've been working for the, or with the audit team already and they're probably going to pick up all of our records in the next week or so. So that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions on the financial reports?
No motion to approve the bills of resolution and the addendum bills of resolution?
Oh, move.
I'll second.
Sorry, approve the financial reports. I got ahead of myself. I apologize. To approve the financial reports.
I'll make a motion.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay, correspondence. Jenny, I don't have any. I think I've said everything I had.
I don't have any.
Okay. Now bills of resolution and addendum bills of resolution.
Second.
Second.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Moving on to legislation. Ordinance 2021-01 and ordinance authorizing renewal of an agreement with Potato, Manaway Potato Festival, setting forth conditions for the use of the old water plant at Booker Park. This is first reading, open for discussion. As you'll see, if you read through it, the changes that were made are italicized. And the, the biggest change was under description and descriptions of premises on number one and maintenance number five, they had asked about the insurance cost and if they have to do any repairs. We gave them a $15,000 cap on what they would have to spend before they'd have to come to council. We also raised the insurance on, we find the page where it's on. Matt, you remember?
250,000.
From 50,000 to 250,000. I'm trying to find on which page it was here.
Yeah, I had it open, but my windows got shuffled around.
Yeah, it's the third page, Linda.
Yep.
So those were the only changes. Is everybody okay with that? Or you want to read it over some more for next month?
And then there was the fourth change. The fourth change was if we need to make any changes to the agreements over the course of the 10 years, we could come together and agree on changes that need to be made.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance 2021-02 and ordinance amending chapter 921 of the Street Utilities and Public Service Code of the Village of Manaway relating to control and operations of the Village of Manaway Water Utility and declaring an emergency. What this is doing is taking out
The whole chapter. Yeah.
I'm sorry?
The whole chapter.
Taken out basically the whole chapter. I was just checking because Michelle was leaving up something in one of them, so.
I left the prohibition against drilling wells in, in this one.
921-02.
Yeah, it's just, it's now, it was 07, now it's 02.
Right. And then 921-01, you add the transfer of utility ownership and operation.
Right. It's, yeah.
Any more discussion on this? Could I have a motion to suspend the rolls?
So moved.
I'll second.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Say that pass. Ordinance 2021-03 and ordinance amending chapter 931 of Street Utilities and Public Services Code of the Village of Manaway relating to control and operations of the Village of Manaway wastewater utility and declaring an emergency, open for discussion. The only, this is removing everything but putting in 931-01 transfer of ownership and operation. Any other further discussion? Motion to suspend the rolls?
So moved.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
No.
Moving on. Ordinance 2021-04 and ordinance amending chapter 941 of the Street Utilities and Public Service Codes of the Village of Manaway relating to control and operation of the Village of Manaway Water and Wastewater's Storm Sewer and declaring an emergency, open for discussion. Michelle, should that include storm sewers? Oh, we're leaving that in.
Uh, basically this, yeah, I took out everything in the chapter that had to do with water and sanitary and we didn't really have much regulation for storm sewer. So I just got some kind of generic ones because I know at some point in the future, we'll probably work on a storm sewer utility. So this is good to, to have for now, just to prevent, you know, roof water going into the sanitary and that sort of general stuff. And we can work on it down the road.
Any other discussion? Motion to suspend the rolls?
So moved.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance 2021-05 and ordinance.
That was just.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Jenny.
Scott?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Thanks, Jenny.
Welcome.
Ordinance 2021-05 and ordinance amending section 13302 of the Codified Ordinance of the Village of Manaway relating to the powers and duties of the village administrator, amending the job description for that position and declaring an emergency, open for discussion.
I think we had discussions in finance about adding some, discussing, you know, do we need to add some things to this or like doing grants or managing after we've gotten grants projects?
And the other one that I would bring up is the rental inspections.
Yes.
And another thing I wanted to bring up was meeting minutes.
What, what about the rental inspections, Matt?
Um, we were talking about potentially giving the responsibility of the rental inspections that, if I recall correctly, needs to happen every three years to the village administrator. And I wanted to know everybody's thoughts on that.
I guess. We would love that, but the way that the state of Ohio is now, you have to hold a certification.
And we discussed that at finance and that if we paid for it, then they would have to stay with us excellent time. You couldn't just leave after you got your certification, you know? But then that money would be coming into our budget to help pay for the administrator.
How are the rental inspections handled now? Who does them now?
We don't have them.
But I mean, not right now, but prior to all this, like.
There wasn't. No, this is all brand new.
Oh, oh, this is all brand new?
Right.
Yes, yes. We never, we never even got it off the ground because then COVID hit and that was that.
Oh, okay. I thought this was an ongoing thing. So we never even got off, oh, right on.
No, it was supposed to, it was supposed to start this summer, this past 2020 summer. And it never got, we, we just couldn't do it. We couldn't, you know, hell, we couldn't even get water meters in houses. So we couldn't send somebody in, you know?
Yeah. So what was the plan?
I, I like your idea. I do. I mean, I just, I don't know what the, I don't know what it entails to get the certification.
And as Ben pointed out, at finance, if we paid for somebody's training to do this, then we'd have to definitely make sure that they had a non-compete.
Yes.
And that they could not leave for so many years. My concern on that is having somebody that would be, that would be doing it. I don't see how that would make any money for the village because when we were going to go with an outsider, that outsider, if I recall, would be contacting the renters or the property owners to set it up and, and they would be billing them directly so that it, it wouldn't be coming from the village, you know, it wouldn't be going through the village's coffers. I thought that's how it was originally supposed to be. And that, that was a way to try and keep the cost down. When we were thinking we could find somebody like the guy from Wyndham that does it over there where he does it for a hundred dollars per unit.
Can I jump in here on a couple things?
Sure.
First, the training, we have a section in the hand, the employee handbook that we adopted in 2017 that allows us to prorate training expenses in the event that the person leaves. So it, in the event that an employee who has attended trainings paid for, reimbursed by the village voluntarily separates from employment with the village, the employee shall be required to repay a prorated portion of the training fees based upon the length of time elapsed from the date of the training and the separation from employment. And then there's a little schedule. So they would, if they left immediately, they'd have to pay it all back. If they left, depending on the cost, within one, two or three years, they'd have to pay some amount of it.
This thing needs to be discussed more.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, it's got to be discussed more. It's got to be sorted out a little bit better than it is right now.
Ben, as far, as far as the village administrator doing the rental inspections or the whole piece of legislation?
Well, the legislation's been passed.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm talking about the legislation in front of us right now.
Oh, gotcha.
So I, Tammy was, and Matt were asking about making amendments, one adding the rental inspector as part of the village administrator jobs. And I'm sorry, Tammy, what was the first one you asked?
It was, we were talking, we were discussing either a grant writer or a, a manager of the grants.
Right. And I don't think.
Matt brought up notekeeping minutes.
Right. Well, I think that they should go ahead and, and do the minutes for the meetings that were required. As far as being a grant manager, I would, I think that that would be a good idea. But as we discussed at finance, applying for a grant, let's say, okay, the Booker Park Trails that we're doing now, those take many hours. I mean, the grant itself is almost 100 pages long with all the documentation you have to put in. So I don't see where we should have them be a grant writer, but a grant manager that tracks everything on it.
Who's going to do the grants?
Well, you could either do our, our engineering firm or use your TA hours from the county.
The, this job description hasn't been thought out enough right now. It needs to be chewed out, chewed on to and talked about more.
Okay.
This is the first reading, isn't it?
It was going to be the first reading.
Service, finance and maybe planning with somebody else could, you know, talk about this a little bit more and sort it out some. There's, there's things about this that needs to be sorted out. And I think Michelle can probably correct me. There's, there's some descriptions in the ORC is what the job description for a village administrator is.
Right.
I'm sure it's included that in there.
That's already in there and we've only removed the parts that have to do with water and sewer. So all the statutory requirements are already in it.
Good, good. Operated two or three times.
Okay, say, so Matt and Tammy and Ben, what, what were your, I mean, through finance, what were your recommendations again? Grant writing or grant managing, let's say, because the grant, grant writing is, is too much. I agree with Linda.
Well, aren't there some grants?
The description for a village administrator to be able to write a grant. The only hard part about writing the grants, getting all that technical stuff that you got to put the description to, and you, you'll probably have to get someone to help you do that. But the, we got TA hours that we, and I think they still, they got a grant writer down at, at the county that could help us with that.
They're for good.
We've got all those TA hours. Why don't we, we use them, use some of them for that? This, this needs to be thought about a little.
Go on, Matt. What was the next one?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I've, I've got three, just off the top, I have three bullet points here. I, I agree with, but I think we need to spend a little bit more time hashing this out. And, and what I would, you know, I'm thinking, do we spend time in a committee meeting? Do we spend time in a council meeting? Or we, or do we call a special session and just focus on that one thing and not get it out?
The, the service, the service committee planning can sort this out. We don't need a special meeting for this.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we wanted everybody together to hash this out in just one session.
Well, just then, so you, everybody just log onto the service meeting. If we want to talk about this, we need to get, this, this needs to get done while it's snowing and before summer hits and, or spring hits. And we need people on the street. You know what I mean? We can't be doing the mayor's job and the administrator's job. And so, I mean, we need to get something hammered out.
The village administrator now is only going to be dealing basically with storm sewer, some building inspection, maybe some zoning.
Yeah, hopefully.
And store involved in it anymore.
Right. So just log onto the service meeting and let's do it.
Yeah.
Right? So what were your?
All right, so, so real quick, my, my three points were, were grants and grant managing. I know grant, grant managing came up in the past. We need somebody to manage grants and oversee the grants. Now, agreed, a lot of these grants are complex, but I'd like to think that some of them aren't that complex. And maybe the administrator can handle some of the easier ones. You know?
Okay. Number two.
Number two, um, the rental inspections. That I was advocating having the administrator do it, but it's something I wanted to learn about and figure it out. Just a couple of questions about that. I know it's new. Back when this was being rolled out, who was going to do the inspections then? Was it John?
No, 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 no. We were gonna hire an outside firm.
You're gonna hire an outside firm?
The village was not going to be connected to it.
Okay, not connected to it. Okay, so, so a couple more questions. Okay, so the guy in, in Freedom or Wyndham or wherever, he was gonna charge a hundred bucks a unit, right?
Not to us. That's what he charges Wyndham. We found somebody they want to charge, they want to charge three hundred dollars a unit.
That, that, that inspection for rental can't be more than what we got in the budget to be able to pay it.
And that comes out of our pocket, right?
No, that comes out of the landlord's pocket.
Okay, so that's what I thought, landlord's pocket. So how much does the landlord pay?
That would have been three hundred. We don't have anybody, but that was one bid we got was three hundred.
Okay.
Still up for discussion.
Okay, so, so what I would say, just to, just to close this topic off, is that we're, we're combining the, the administrator and the assistant in one role here. And I don't want to go and, and throw all these responsibilities on this role when we're not even sure if the person can handle everything that's here in their forty hour week.
Right.
I don't want to come like down the road and just like, like, just say, okay, everything's working out. You're village administrator. You have to do this now too. I don't want to pile roles and responsibilities on the administrators because there's no one else to be accountable. So I just want to be cognizant of that.
No, I think it should be, you might also need to A, B, C, D. You know, if we add those, you know, add in, could possibly entail these things. Just as an outlier, doesn't have to do that now, but what if we let, left it, the door open?
Yeah. Okay. Third thing is meeting minutes. So is this position only responsible for the like service meeting and the planning meeting? Or are we talking, that's, that's the only minute that needs to be recorded?
Service and plan.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah, service.
Because I thought there was some blurb out there about recording all the meetings, the minutes for all the meetings.
And the only other thing, because we would be combining both positions, that person would also be answering customer questions, uh, being the, the face uh, downstairs and still doing zoning also. And let me believe you, I don't, this last year with zoning, we have been so busy.
Okay, so, so can everybody commit to one service Tuesday the second?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll send the link to everybody.
Yeah, and just, let's just hash it out. I mean, Ben's right. It needs, it needs a little bit of work. But let's just try to, try to get it done in one night and be done with it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just don't want to rush through it. I just want to take time with the
It's too hard to do during a council meeting, so.
Council meeting goes on long enough, this kind of thing should be done in, in a committee.
We can do that in service and we'll just All right. Okay, sorry, Linda.
No, that's all right. That's all right. I'm just trying to, uh, keep track of where I'm at.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand everything clearly.
Okay. For sending it to service to go through the whole thing.
Yeah, excellent.
Okay, great. Then let's move on to twenty twenty one oh six, the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a retroactive, uh, location agreement with the hunting film, you'll, you'll see relating to the filming at various locations owned by the village. This was something that, um, Hammer Hunting should have gotten to us prior to, and now they're asking it so that they can finish up their paperwork with us. Any questions? I mean, we had made a motion back in October, I think it was October to allow them to do it. We just didn't pass any paperwork on it. Could I have a motion to suspend the rule so we can get this back to them so they can proceed? Thank you.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And moving on to ordinance twenty twenty one dash oh seven and ordinance authorizing certain adjustments to the twenty twenty one appropriations and declaring an emergency. Jenny, I'll let you explain these to us.
Okay. Uh, the cemetery fund, I found out this year that after so many years, um, the UAN shuts old stuff down. So we had an old purchase order of money that was donated for the Aldrich sisters. And nothing has been done as far as the family doing a monument or anything yet. They're still working things out. But anyway, I, that purchase order closed, so I have to make a new one this year. So we need to appropriate, uh, four thousand two hundred thirty five for that. The local coronavirus relief fund, um, that is the amount of money that was left for police wages that we didn't use last year. So we're just going to go ahead and, um, we're allowed to spend that this year. So we're going to have to appropriate that. Uh, water, sewer, water debt, water and sewer capital funds. This is the fund balance today of what is in the funds. We need to appropriate these amounts so that we can cut a check and send it to the county. Any bills that come in after this point, I'm just going to give them to the county and they're going to pay them. And hopefully, you know, we're going to transition everything into their name. But it, it is going a little bit slower. We've had a couple snags. Um, we had the Dominion bill on, um, auto pay. That's off now. So the actual bill will come and that I can just take that to the county. You know, if we don't have it all settled by then. But that, that's what all these amendments are for.
Any other discussion? Motion to suspend the rules?
You need to amend to include the, um, new numbers because they're different from the last time it was reviewed.
Oh, that's true. Yes. It was, it was mostly blank for those of you that didn't have it the other day. Uh, motion to amend the changes that Jenny has made.
Second.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Now, motion to suspend the rules.
I'm moved.
Second.
Ben?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I'm moved. Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And moving on to ordinance twenty twenty one dash eight zero eight and ordinance authorizing a contact with the, with Portage County Public Defenders for Defense of Indigent Persons charged with criminal offenses under the village ordinance and declaring an emergency. This is kind of a housekeeping thing. Uh, I don't think we've used it more than once or twice.
Do it every year.
Right. Any discussion? Motion to suspend the rules?
I'm moved.
Second.
Marty?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
And moving on, chief reports?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, we did not have a safety meeting in January. Uh, not a whole lot going on. Um, like to commend the service department with the Christmas Eve, Christmas Day snowstorm we had. Uh, did a really good job on the village streets. Uh, State Patrol was busy out in the townships with crashes, but, um, we've been okay. And we will need to have, we're gonna have a safety meeting on Wednesday, February third at six o'clock. Um, most of you, I should have, everybody should have a couple of pictures I sent with the complaint for parking in the village. Um, Michelle, has that person anything up to yet as far as communication since we started tonight?
No, nothing.
Okay, I'm gonna just say that we're gonna address that at safety because that's where it's gonna start back anyway. There's no sense going through the whole thing right now, council, about changing parking provisions within the village. So we'll discuss that at our safety meeting on Wednesday, February third at six o'clock. Other than that, uh, that's all that I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, village administrator report, um, I've been signing, uh, purchase requisitions, um, for John. Um, wished him well before he left, um, working on several paperwork we're gonna be meeting for the signings and for an easement that they need to get with the county. Because the sanitary line that the village put in between them and the Jansen brothers is not within the easement line. So we have to get them to expand the easement by seven or ten feet. Uh, we're still waiting to, uh, hear back from, um, Manaway Vet Clinic. That's still in recess. From planning, uh, they're saying that they need a variance for non-conforming, um, what else was it, Michelle? Non-conforming use?
They're, they're looking to expand a non-conforming use, so they need a variance to do that.
Thank you. And, uh, we have somebody interested in purchasing property up behind, um, the pharmacy. Uh, to build a house there. Uh, I did speak to them briefly today, told them who the owners of the property were. Told them that the water and sewer was available for them to extend, but that we, uh, they would have to pay for that theirself and once they become more interested, I'll make sure that they know that, uh, they need to deal through the county. And I'm going to, uh, start, as soon as I get some of this other stuff cleared up, I'm going to start working on evaluations and, and the new budget for twenty twenty two. Rich I Felice. Or, or Gene. Gene Arders.
Well, you know, it's okay. I don't mind, uh, having Rich take care of this, but so, uh, good morning or good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm privileged, by the way, to have this as my first opportunity to speak to you as the village engineer of Manaway. And, um, I don't know if I'm gonna do this right, but I have sent out a letter, um, the engineers report, and you've already touched base about the site plans, about the general Dollar General on Main. And it was approved. Construction's anticipated to begin in the next couple of months. And, uh, as you had mentioned about the vet clinic, the, um, project is kind of on a slight hold there. And we also had about a downtown streetscape and other enhancement projects that were assisting DMRC. And then the capital planning, we have submitted some applications. But that's being transitioned over to the Portage County now that they're taking over the sewer and the water. And then just from the capital projects, there was the Portage County Utility Acquisition. Excuse me. We're just, uh, assisting regarding existing projects, again, being transitioned over to the Portage County. And the water reservoir rehabilitation, the design is in progress. We're also coordinating, everything sounds to be, we'll be coordinating a lot with Portage County for a little bit here. And the Prospect Street Phase Two, the pre-construction meeting is gonna be starting in, I think it was scheduled for like another week or a couple of weeks from now. Um, I don't know the exact date. But construction will start sometime in March twenty twenty one. And I hope I did that right. My first time doing it. So, uh, if you have any questions, let me know.
That was fine, except Dollar General, uh, is hoping to, uh, break ground on February eighth.
Oh, fantastic to hear. I'm glad to hear that.
What's LTIP, SCIP?
Man, you're gonna ask me a hard question. I don't know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna default to the ex-village engineer.
So once Gene gets, once Gene gets acclimated to the lingo, the Ohio Public Works Commission. So the LTIP skip, those are the, the regular, if you will, funds coming from the bond issue. Uh, the Prospect Street as well as the, the proposed waterline project, Prospect Street went to small government instead of LTIP skip. So we didn't score high enough to win, win that, but Prospect, we won it in small government. So similarly on the waterline, uh, application, which is now going over to the county. Uh, we're awaiting small government decision since it was not awarded under the LTIPs. Uh, local transportation improvement program, small, yeah, that, LTIP skip. So that's the normal Ohio Public Works Commission, uh, program. And small government is the alternative if you don't score. And you're, and you're a population under five thousand.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Matt, throw me, throw me an easy question now.
Well, I looked at this sheet and I said, what's one thing on here that I know that Gene can't answer right off the bat? I didn't really want to know what the acronym stood for. I just wanted
Easy one, easy one.
All right, well, what's the additional authorization for five hundred dollars for the vet clinic for?
I could answer that one. Easy one. Um, so when we did the original, uh, authorization, uh, in the code and our ordinance, it's, uh, five hundred dollars. And we thought it was gonna be a very simple, which it was in the beginning. So we had the five hundred dollar fee. But then we had to, uh, we have some hiccups, well, not we, but they had some hiccups with the sanitary and the water. And so we had to do a second review. Actually, it kind of went into almost three reviews. And because we rushed with the plan review to get it approved, uh, our recommendation, uh, unfortunately, I was not paying attention to the time in that one week. And, um, I should have asked for the additional five hundred. It was more time involved. And so, um, basically, I should have asked for a thousand dollars upfront instead of the five hundred.
And at this point, uh, I have not approved that because it is a site plan review. We have to collect the money from the vet clinic. And so I'm still waiting for them to give us an answer on that.
So we did like Dollar General, for example, because we knew Dollar General is gonna be a lot more detailed. We had stormwater grading and a whole bunch of other, uh, items to that. So we had requested more than the original five hundred. Again, we estimate, and I think we're, uh, a little bit actually underneath what we had, uh, asked for for the Dollar General. But like I said, unfortunately, with my first time, um, I, uh, underestimated, well, I didn't estimate enough.
That's factual. That's factual. No, the, 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 the services amounted to be more than you expected, basically, because of the, basically, they, they that prior site plan about the water and sewer and you ended up having to figure it out for them, really.
Yeah. And the nice thing is, is at the end of the day, it worked out for the benefit of not only the vet clinic, even if however that moves forward, but it also benefits to the village and to the apartments because now we have all found out that the sewer was not connected properly. So again, going to the Portis County now, but it's a win-win in that way. So I just asked the mayor for an additional 500. And that to answer your question, Tammy?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, and, and for Jean, actually, so Mayor, you just mentioned Dollar General may kickstart next month. So what is not provided for is because in prior commercial developments, the village had an administrator who kept their eyes and ears on, on the project. So there isn't, there are no funds there for inspection. Should, especially when it comes to connection to your water and sanitary sewer systems, your, the stormwater per plan, we have to assure they, they conform. So I would ask, again, if, without the administrator, Mayor, sorry to burden you, but they should not start work without a pre-construction meeting. And, and perhaps the village may want some type of, unless, unless you're able to encumber it yourself, funds to provide for inspection should, should be needed. Quite frankly, who's gonna watch the grading? Who's gonna watch the drainage? Who's gonna watch the stormwater and make sure it complies with the plans and specs? Doesn't mean a full-time, we're not talking about a public project. We're talking about a private project and it's more, you know, stopping by, taking a look at the project, where they're at, what they're doing, making sure it's per plan, you know, that kind of thing. Again, without an administrator, you're, you, you need someone. I recommend you need someone to kind of watch that project periodically. Periodically. It's not, it's not a, a big to-do. Would you agree, Jean? It's just something.
I, I agree. A quick question, though. Just because of the transition to the Portis County, the sanitary and the water, I'm just, well, I'm sure.
No, you're right.
You're testing me.
Right. The wa, the, the water line, the connect, yeah, sorry. But, but about the, yeah, drainage and the, and the access road and the, and that the drive is built right, you know, that kind of thing. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
But you're, but you are correct, though, and Mayor and Council, I guess I'll put this back to you guys is, for example, they have to go across Main Street. They have to open cut that. So again, that's your road, well, I know it's a state route, but it's your responsibility for that road. So you wanna make sure that they put that back in the proper condition. I know this sounds very simple, but it's, it's one of the things you don't want it to be done not correctly, and then in five years, it fails, and then you're stuck having to make that repair or correct it. Because Dollar General is not gonna make that correction five years later. The second thing goes back to the grading. Just because number one, to the east, you've got the stormwater basin behind the building, which is up against FEMA floodplain back there. Again, they're away from the floodplain, but those are things that are detrimental, that can be detrimental to a floodplain and your river back there. Same with SWEPT, the stormwater pollution plan, to ensure that they put their silt fence up properly. Again, it's a very, very straightforward project. Luckily, it's not like a, you know, a, a new subdivision that's like 100 acres or something, but on these small sites, it can be accidentally or inadvertently silt fences not installed because it's like, oh, it's just a small one and a half, two acre site, and then it damages your, your stream or something. So same for the grading. So those are just some things. I don't know, and again, I, I guess I'll digress back to Rich on this. Is that something, and some other communities, the, the applicant, so not Dollar General per se, but the developer, you know, they would put money towards a
Correct.
Towards it, yes. And then that way, it's to the contractor and their responsibility to make sure they're doing it right. And if they're doing it right, then it's very minimum time, and then they don't get billed any, well, they get billed a little bit, but not a lot. But if, first of, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, then there's money in there. So there's no, it's a benefit to the village, but there's no cost to the village.
And it's also, it's also proactive, so that we're not reactive after the fact and saying, you messed up, go back and fix it.
Which costs more money, too.
Okay. I, I will meet with, with you, Jean, to see how much we would have to add for certain things. As far as the water cap in and the sewer cap in and the easement through the county, they would be the ones responsible for inspecting to make sure that those, those three things are done correctly. As far as the grading and, and inspecting all the other aspects, we will come up with our list and a cost estimate for Dollar General to be able to reimburse you or whoever is going to be overseeing the times when things need inspected, so.
Yeah, we can talk about it later. Sorry to burden council meeting with it.
Yeah, because I don't wanna be putting on my outdoor boots and tromping down, trying to throw something out I don't know anything about, so. Okay, so is that it for Engineers Report?
Yes, Mayor.
I think so.
Okay. Scott Weaver for Service and Planning.
Okay, Service. Well, we spent a lot of time with Brian Perkins from the Potato Festival, so you all have seen that. What else did we, oh, we spent a lot of time on the Village Administrator's Job Description. You've all seen that. We'll talk about that next month. We reviewed Linda Schilling's letter about the clerk's position. So that's something I think we'll just have to evaluate as we go. Maybe that's gonna be an ongoing discussion. And we had somebody interested in the wood chipper. We were supposed to kind of get a estimate on what we thought it was worth. I think John said if it was under $1,000, we didn't have to put it out for bid. Isn't that what he said, Linda?
Yes.
Okay. So we might be getting rid of the old wood chipper. And then the Canada Road repairs, we discussed that, whether we wanted to do the 1,600 feet or 200 feet. We need to get a bid packet ready so we can start that this spring. And did we do that, Linda? Did John work on any of that before you left?
I have the, the basic draft of, of it, ready to go. And as soon as we see that we've been reimbursed from the Orchard Street and, and Jenny advises us on how much we have at that point at the February council meeting, that we could go ahead with either 1,600 feet or 3,200 feet, and, and we'll decide then. We just go with the 1,600 feet, then we only have to come up with $40,000. The way that John is recommending we do the bid is, is not just tell them that if they do bid for the 3,200 feet, that it could not exceed a certain dollar amount. And what the depth and all the different things. I've got the paperwork here. We'll have it at service for you guys.
Okay, great.
Because we set that, that would be March before we would decide, so.
Okay.
February, you know, end of February, hopefully Jenny will know where we stand our finances and roadworthy money, so.
Okay. So with planning, we we talked about the old Middlefield Bank a little bit with, about Tom Van Aken and FEMA. And that seems like this is, this just gonna be, I, I know we brought this up to you guys a month ago, but it sounds like this is just gonna be an ongoing process. We'll just, they're kind of taking the lead on it. We don't know a whole lot about it, so we'll just play it by ear as they get information. The rental inspection fees is kind of on hold right now. We haven't, like I said, we haven't talked to the Yules again since they gave us the original quote. And that's something we can talk about, Matt, at the next meeting. I can bring you all up to speed on the, you know, at the service meeting on that. What else did we talk about? Oh, sidewalks. Where Linda had a list of sidewalks that needed repaired from quite a few years ago, so we're gonna work on that this spring. And maybe try to get a, try to get somebody in here that we can kind of lump streets together, you know, to, to try and do sections of sidewalk. If, you know, residents can afford it. That we can get a better deal. We can lump some projects together, you know, with one contractor, so. And, and we need to look in, you know, look for a grant, see if maybe we can get a village-wide grant to replace some of the sidewalks. So we're gonna kind of work on that this spring, too. We had some complaints, some maintenance issues that John was taking care of that we talked about, and that was about it.
One thing to add, Scott, is the planning chair has spoken with Ryan Shackerfold, and he is going to be sending him some information on this. This, this FEMA grant, what, how it kind of works is, is Tom Van Aken wants to get rid of his property where the Middlefield Bank is. And he wants to go for a FEMA grant. I think it maxes out, it was $160,000? There's only so much of the funding that that we would get, we would, it would still cost the village money. The biggest concern is because the property is sinking because of the fill that was used prior to it being built, making it a possible brownfield. Is that what, is that the correct term?
Yep.
And, and so, you know, how much would it cost for the re, to clean all that up? And so that, that's kind of where we're at. That's why John Clark, the chairperson, has been talking with Ryan Shackerfold about how all this works and, and stuff. And because it'd be nice to have that piece of land, you know, for parking or, or maybe do something, another canoe, take in or take out, but if it's gonna cost the village a lot of money, then.
Yeah, the remediation could possibly be a lot.
Right, right next to the
Go, go ahead, Tammy.
Right next to the river. I mean, it's not like it's away from that, so then we have the
Right, right.
FEMA looking at us on the water, too.
Right, right. So before we were doing it, you know, we had discussed, we would need to, you know, there would need to be soil samples taken and, you know, a lot of things before the village agreed to. Anything. I mean, that could leave the village hanging out there, you know? So we gotta be careful with that one, but it would be great, but. Pardon me?
It's like I said, what's the grant for exactly? So is it like demolishing the building and then, and then re, re?
No, that's building. It's buying the property, and then we'd have to come up with the funds to, to demolish the building and then deal with the brownfield.
Yeah. They would purchase, I think that it was 75% of the, wasn't it 75% they would purchase the building for? Yeah. But we don't even have a, an appraisal. I mean, all they really have is the tax appraisal. There, there's not an official appraisal on the building, so. Yeah, I, I mean, when we talked to him originally, he, it sounds like he just wants out from underneath the building. It almost sounded like he would take, you know, he's willing to listen to the offer, but yeah, it could potentially cost the village more than we would wanna chew, so. Yeah.
And we just wanted to make sure all of you were aware that we had been approached that someone wants us basically to buy their property and demolish the area and deal with the cleanup.
Gotcha, understood.
Yeah.
Okay, that was it.
Okay, Marty Parks in Shaintree.
We didn't meet. I don't have anything.
Okay. You guys meet again, I think either in February or March. I'm not sure. I think we said March.
Yeah, I think we did say March, yes.
If, if the COVID gets lifted, you might have to bump up and come in February to start planning Arbor Day, so. So that's where we're at. Oh, gosh, I'm up now. Cemetery. We already discussed cemetery. I'm gonna be meeting with the cemetery board as far as things that they wanna do. I had sent an email to Cookie and, and Patty, and I'll have to include Nina now. As far as what kind of flowers that they wanted to order for up there at the cemetery and any other projects that they might think that need to be done. I don't know if there's any trees or anything that need to come down and, and that kind of thing, so we'll, we'll start there. And see what they say. I have reached out to the Urban Growers to get a estimate on, on flowers for the cemetery. And told them I would like that at least before service. So I could meet with the cemetery board, because last time the cemetery board came to the service meeting to, you know, so we didn't have to schedule an extra Zoom meeting. Board of Zoning Appeals, again, we're waiting to hear from Dollar Tree or the vet clinic to see if they are going to move forward or not. I did speak with that Sean Thompson, I think is that works at Manfred's. They wanted more information on us as far as ABC. This is the list of things that we have to do so they can make their, their decision if they're going to proceed or not. So that call came this afternoon and I told them I would have to sit down tomorrow and go through the minutes and stuff to look and reassure myself of everything that was discussed at that meeting back in December.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If they do not move forward with the vet clinic project, are you going to, is the village gonna require them, or, or Portis County could require them to address the sanitary connection issue?
Uh, I, yes, because when I did speak with them, they have surveyed the area. They have located the lines. So they know what they have to do, so they are aware that that does, that should have not happened that way back in 2005, 2007, whenever it was. And that it needs to be corrected. So they are aware of that, and the county will be aware of that also.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Linda, while you're on the phone with Urban Growers, can I ask a favor? Can you find out how much another weekender half or two halves would cost that we hung on the bridge? I think we should, I think we need to add, I know that this is a Parks thing, but since you're gonna be on the phone with them, if we could add another basket on the bridge.
You want a whole basket that comes in half then? So two more halves?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have to buy a whole, right?
Yeah, you have to buy the whole.
Yeah, so if we put one more half on the bridge, maybe we could put one half on, on the, your building.
Okay, let me while we're discussing that, before we get to Tammy, sorry, Tammy. Michelle had sent out the, the letter of her opinion after Matt hurried back from Ohio Edison regarding the poles. Michelle's recommendation at this time, Michelle, correct me when I get it incorrect, because I read, read it quickly today in between everything else, that Michelle is recommending that we do not hang anything on the poles at this time, even though we feel that they really don't have a leg to stand on, basically, if, if we did.
Oh, I never said we don't, they don't have a leg to stand on.
Yeah.
That's not correct.
Well, that's, I, I was gonna hand it over to you because I couldn't think of the right word that I wanted to say.
Well, let's just say that we've been put on notice that we're not to hang anything on their poles without a agreement that's agreed to by Ohio Edison slash First Energy and us. And there is a, a legal clause in it about And there is a illegal clause in it about us indemnifying them in the event that something goes wrong. And we can't do that unless we appropriate all the money that it would take to indemnify them. And if there's enough consideration in the contract to cover our indemnification of them, which there isn't and there won't be, and they won't take the indemnification clause out. So because of that, I think that we would be ill-advised to to continue hanging things on their poles without that agreement in place.
Okay, so that's where I was going, and I knew I was saying it wrong about the, but yeah, it doesn't matter. So he is gonna be giving me prices for the hanging baskets, but we're gonna have to, everybody look at the contract that they want us to sign and decide, is it gonna be worth doing it and having hanging baskets or not doing it?
Wow.
Yeah, no flags, no banners, no Christmas wreaths.
No hanging baskets.
So there's been a lot going on from the village administrator's standpoint. Needs to get addressed. I was telling everyone incorrect. I read it quickly, and I knew that there was that indemnity thing that was screwing, so. So everybody think about that. As soon as I have an updated contract, I'll send you so you can review it. I hate dumping on service, because we're gonna be going over Sorry. We're gonna be looking at the village administrator's thing, so we will try and keep the agenda short for service. We probably need to discuss this to decide if it needs to move on to council, or we're not going to. I mean, because we're gonna have to let the school know, we're gonna have to let the American Legion know, we're gonna have to let the DMRC know. But that stuff won't be happening, and that really stazes up the village in the summer, so.
Do you want to move service to six o'clock?
Six thirty?
Six o'clock.
I'd like to move planning to six o'clock, too.
We can do that if you want.
You got two votes here.
We've gone from seven to six thirty, we might as well go to six.
I gotta tell you, the poll agreement thing really obsessed me. It makes me want to tattle on all the communities that are hanging stuff on their poles that's signing the agreement. I'm kidding, but it bumps me up.
Especially the hanging baskets.
Yeah.
And the flags.
I see that all over the place. I just thought, I thought that was normal. I mean, I know Aurora, where I live, I mean, they've got somebody goes around with the, and again, maybe they pay for the insurance or not, but I see they got like college or high school kids on the back of the truck, you know, they water them, they're beautiful flowers, baskets, and the Christmas, they put little the thing, and Twinsburg does that too. That's interesting.
I don't think Ohio Edison has gotten in touch with everybody who's doing this yet. I mean, it's every municipality across the state. I know they haven't gotten in touch with Garrettsville yet. So I would imagine that maybe they're just trying to work their way through places, and I'm not sure how we got on their radar so quick.
We got on their radar because we called them to see if a resident could put flags up on a residential, up on reservoir.
Yes.
And that raised the red flag. What happened was is some community, I'm trying to think where there's a lake, Berlin, maybe, Berlin Center, someplace where they had been putting flags and such up, and one of the flags caught fire by flipping up and hitting the lines, and they were without power in that area for several days. And they ended up making the the community pay for the repairs. So that's why they want us to have a cut, an agreement, so.
Wow.
Yeah, so, so yeah, we're probably just the second one, because we called about something. So sometimes, sometimes you can get away with doing a mass for forgiveness. I certainly don't want to take a chance. And I guess it's council's decision if you want to take that chance or not to continue doing it and roll the dice, so to speak.
Count yourself lucky then that you weren't the one, like that Berlin, that the flag hit it, and then they backcharged you.
Okay, so soon as soon as I have that, I'll share that with everybody for to review and discuss at a later date.
This isn't over yet. I'm gonna find a way around this.
Well, I you don't think he will, Ben?
All they'd have to do is
Ohio Edison is bigger than the state probably, probably got more money. And people like that, they make a decision. And it's like fighting a jot.
What were you gonna say, Michelle?
I was gonna say, I mean, there are so many other clauses in that contract that protect them that I I don't see why they're so inflexible that they can't take out that one paragraph about indemnification. Because we're not, we're not trying to absolve ourselves of any liability. We could add them as an additional insured on our insurance policy. You know, there are, there are other provisions in there that protect them, so I, I really don't understand why they refuse to take out that one paragraph. They they could still be protected completely under the
Edison is tough.
But they won't do it.
I've had to work with them before.
Turning the charm, Matt.
Good luck.
Linda Schilling says this, she says it sucks, and she'll do what she can to help. I don't know what she can do to help, but thank you, Linda.
She texted me already.
Yeah.
In fact, I got five texts from somebody.
Okay, we're to Tammy.
So we met last week, last Wednesday for our finance meeting. We nominated a new chair. We went over the appropriations, the new ones that are in the amended one that we approved tonight. Cemetery and of the coronavirus and water and sewer funds related. We discussed all the ordinances we talked about tonight, one through eight. And we discussed village administrator in in depth on things we wanted to look at adding in to the village administrator's position. And I want to do Scott Weaver's thing on Linda Schilling letter. We we discussed it and know that we're gonna need to continue looking at that over the years. And that's all.
Safety, you didn't have a meeting. Regional planning, I know that the CDBG funding is going to be coming up, so we may be wanting to set that up. And hopefully, whoever applies for the new position will be taking over Paul's committees that she was on. Hopefully, they'll also take that. Is there any other new or other business?
Mayor, I just want to discuss, I got another letter from the village regarding the water meter replacement saying second notice when we haven't got ours replaced because of of COVID. So I kind of go, you know, that's kind of, it's kind of sad to get a second notice when you can't, we can't do anything about it, you know?
Well, actually, Ray Schwartz met with the county and told them that they were going to be sending out the letters to schedule. So they will be coming out. I've been told by the people that have been calling here that when they call that eight hundred number that, and this was just today, okay, that all you get is a recording, apparently, telling you that they're not scheduling because of the COVID. I need, I have a note here on my desk that called Ray Schwartz.
That's not true. I called today and I talked and scheduled mine.
Okay.
At that eight hundred number.
We called today and we just got a recording.
What time did you call?
Paul called this morning before midnoon.
I called at nine thirty. I got through scheduling. Scheduled for Monday, between two and four. I can't understand why somebody else gets a recording, unless all our lines were tied up and they put a recording.
And and that could be, but I'm I'm gonna let him know that people are trying to reach them and having trouble getting through. They have told the county to backstep, that they are going to get them all scheduled and have them all installed by the, hopefully by the end of February. That, so I can only recommend keep trying to call, and I will let him know that people are having trouble getting through.
Hey, Linda, you were talking about the CDBG funding. Have you talked, have you heard from Dan Tillit lately?
I spoke with Dan Tillit a week ago. He was still under the weather. And so that's, that's kind of where that's at, so. Still, still, I I mean, can't move forward on applying for CDBG funds until we have written confirmation from them that all three property owners or all four property owners if the vacant lot is gonna be considered, that they are behind this one hundred percent on that, so. And I'm not even a hundred percent certain that the village can apply for a grant on private property for something like that. That's gonna, I have to read all the details of the grant for that and for the state bond, so.
Okay.
So if anybody wants to do any extra reading, let me know. I'm checking some stuff out, so, so that's where that that's at, so.
Okay.
Okay, anything else that properly comes before council? Can I have a motion to go into executive session for possible employee discipline? Fight Mary Ann in?
I'll second that.
Matt?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Okay, here we go.
Well, the only thing left, Jenny, is the adjournment, and I think I'm cutting out.
I don't blame you.
So if anybody needs me, I have my cell phone, but once I come out of executive session, I don't foresee any discussion.
No.
Then it's just gonna go into adjournment, so they may be there a while.
Doesn't sound like it has anything to do with your department, so.
Well, that's a beautiful thing.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, some, it's involved somebody, but it's always good when you dodge that bullet.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna leave as well, then.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold the fort. I got this.
All right, take care, guys. Bye, we see ya.
Goodnight.
Okay. I got booted.
We all did.
I booted everybody by accident.
I thought it was me.
It was me. It was totally me. I'm not, I don't know what the hang of ending those breakout rooms and Holly's tapping on my legs trying to get me to come play with her so everything's just a little topsy turvy.
Are we live? Are we up?
You're up, you're live, you're up, you look like you're on YouTube. We just need to here have more cookies Holly, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to exit executive session.
I'll second that.
Do you have all your members?
We're missing Randy.
You're missing Randy.
Okay.
I kinda had to log out and log back in.
It was me. I kicked everybody out by accident.
Oh.
I wanna know what the five dollars and twenty-nine cents it landed was.
What's that Marty?
There, there a sign popped up there and said something about I could get something for five dollars and twenty-nine cents.
It was an upgrade offer.
Oh great.
Hold on, it knocked me off.
We, we.
Cheap upgrade.
I take full responsibility for that.
Okay. Matt made, Matt moved to go out of exit executive session. Tammy seconded. So, Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I would like to make a motion to make Mayor Clark the acting village administrator.
We gotta go back into session.
Oh. Okay. Like to make a motion to go back in the regular session.
Second.
Okay.
Okay Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I would like to make a motion to make Mayor Clark the acting village administrator.
We gotta go back into session.
Oh. Okay. Like to make a motion to go back in the regular session.
Second.
Okay.
Okay Tammy?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I would like to make a motion to make Mayor Clark the acting village administrator.
We're gonna do the other thing first.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to grant Dave in the service department his two days of personal time that we owed him from last year or agreed to pay him from last year.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, third time's a charm.
I would like to make a motion to make Mayor Clark the acting village administrator.
Okay.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay, so we're done, right? Michelle?
I think you've done everything you need to do, yep.
Okay.
Except you're.
I couldn't hit.
Who moved?
Some moved.
All right, Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay, so we're done, right? Michelle?
I think you've done everything you need to do, yep.
Okay.
Except you're.
I couldn't hit.
Who moved?
Some moved.
All right, Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Tammy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, 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 Tammy?[1001.18]